Everybody. Let's call this meeting to order at six oh one. And in the spirit of reconciliation, we'll begin by acknowledging the traditional territories of the people treaty seven region in southern Alberta, which includes Blackfoot Confederacy, Member Six, Scott County, and First Nations, the Stoney Dakota Bears Park Chiniqui and Wesley First Nations, the Dene of Sutina First Nations, Matee Nation, Nation Three, and all those that made Treaty Seven lands their own. So thank you everyone for coming tonight. It's good to see some familiar faces. We know the emergency protocols out the door here. And if anything else arises, I'm sure TJ will guide us somewhere else. Watchrooms are in the back and just a friendly reminder to turn your phones on to vibrator beeps. Okay, so if I can get an adoption for the agenda. Thank you very much, Councilor Flaber. Any additions or? I think we're okay with what was presented.
Now, it's just one deputy, which is part of the strategic planning PowerPoint. We just have additional slides.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, nothing else. All of them favor. That's Carrie. And let's move right to it then. So we'll move over to other items for discussion, which is counselor, council's strategic priorities. And we've got our package here. Thank you for that. Um, I think I'll just pass it over to you. I'll let you take it from here if you like.
Sounds good. Thanks, Deputy Mayor. So strategic planning. So draw your attention to the PowerPoint deck on the screen. So we'll go over this in six parts. So first I'll review strategic thinking within our current operating environment, which of course is this slide deck. Then I'll turn it over to Carrie for a deep dive into planning and developing in terms of our must do's and sequencing with future objectives. We'll then turn it over to Craig to briefly discuss asset management. I'll turn it back to myself to look over our current priorities list. And then we'll turn it over to council for discussion. And then from there, I'll bring it back into a report following council's direction or eventual council approval. So strategic planning. So again, our guiding document here is Strategic Plan 2023 to 2027, which shows our vision and our mission. And those four strategic theme areas of service, adaptability, vitality, and experience. So really what we want to get across here in terms of philosophy is that strategy really occurs when our aspirations are proportioned to our capabilities. Right? So in terms of this, our aspirations or objectives. When they start to exceed our capabilities in terms of administrative capacity and budget, we start to have a gap between our commitments and our capacity. So in other words, our commitments exceed our capacity and then we do not achieve strategic objectives. And of course, there's always more priorities than resources. So really what we're looking at here is deciding what not to do for now, really the next sixteen months. And deciding what we have to do beyond those sixteen months. So tonight is really about that sequencing of A through Z for all the objectives. Just gonna turn this off. So in terms of the current situation or the external environment, and again, I'm obviously new here, so my knowledge is quite limited compared to others. But all we can see again is the region is growing fast. So we all know that's coming. And there's really no signs of abatement on that front. So Diamond Valley has begun a once in a lifetime prolonged period of growth and change. And that scale and pace of growth is probably going to exceed our capabilities. And that's that's pretty common in most, most towns and cities going through growth across the country. So really what we want to get across is that expectation and change management are key. It's really ensuring that our expectations are aligned with what resources we actually have to commit to those priorities going from there. And again, we'll, although we talk a lot about all the opportunities that are coming too, while I carry talking about some of those opportunities are presenting challenges in terms of capacity. So internally, within the town of Diamond Valley, so again, we know we're in this post amalgamation now where really what it's it appears to be is a mix of a merger between, you know, two towns with a bit of a startup feel. So really what we're looking at here is, you know, we've, we've taken the duplex, we've put it together under one house, we have one mailing address, but now it's time internally to do those ranos, try to bring everything up to speed in one area. So we have many brand new staff and key roles, including myself. So really our timeline here is likely one to three years to really streamline a lot of these policies, procedures, and processes. But again, half the senior team is, is brand new as well. One of the big areas I really want to emphasize is that staff sustainment. So really, we're trying to look for a sustainable tempo to make sure that, you know, we can build the current team and build them out into the future. So we're able to have some good sequencing for all of these priorities. When I talk about six PC, what that stands for is policy, procedure, process, plans, projects. And more importantly, people and culture. So really, you know, when we look at this post amalgamation of, you know, taking the two previous sets of policies, process, and procedure, and merging it into one, it will take some time to actually streamline all of those. And again, as we know, we do have an ongoing hiring process and new staff. So again, myself, two weeks ago. New finance position next week would be hiring for a new planner position here in the coming weeks as well. So lots of change there. So we'll talk about four focus areas within local government. So these are four generic focus areas that local governments, you know, throughout the continent ill with. I'll refer to them as the ABCs and lowercase Cs. So on the top is the As. These are the big items, strategic priorities. So for example, municipal development plan, fire master plan, First Avenue Capital Project. So those large strategic items that budgeted for and that are on the books to, to conclude. Below the As are the Bs, so the daily operations. So these are the must get does. The majority of the day today is focused on the Bs. This could be stuff like council agenda prep, snow removal, emergency response, development permits, budget, basically the daily operations. Below the As and Bs, we have the Cs. So these are the emergent issues. Now, they're kind of the known unknowns. They're files that we know are going to come. We don't know exactly what they'll be, but they take up a lot of time and resources. This could be anything from you know, responding to a natural disaster, for example, or some sort of large political issue of the day. Below the Cs are the lowercase Cs. And this is, you know, what we can refer to as the tactical churn. This is everything from emailing, inquiries, phone calls, the illustrious email snacking where folks just tend to snack on emails all day. And really just a lot of minor matters that absorb time and resources. So the big takeaway on this slide is that when we're talking strategy, we want to make sure that we're spending the majority of our capital and resources on the As and the Bs. Just in terms of finding that balance between our priorities and our capacity. So right now, again, we're approaching second quarter of 2024. In other words, we have really five quarters or sixteen or so months left in 2024, 2025. So really, we're not talking about a two year plan. We're really talking about what are we going to get accomplished in the next year and change. What we'll present is, we'll show a sequencing of current priorities that have been budgeted for what we believe staff have the capacity to get to after Kerry's and Craig are done presenting. And the key piece here is anything added to that, we'll have to look at perhaps reprioritizing a different area. So really our intent here, just understand what, what council's intent is for the next year and a bit, say, okay, how can we get this into a plan? So we have our strategic visionary plan 23 to 27, and look how we can create a bit of a work plan so that everyone knows what we're working on in a way that's, you know, these objectives being specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and really time bound. It's some examples of that, of course, you know, keep bringing it back up, the municipal development plan and fire master plan. And the key piece there is both of those plans are already budgeted for 2024. So, you know, those are two, two big items we can get off the plate. So just in closing, again, there's, there's always going to be more priorities than resources to manage. So really what we're looking at doing here is finding that sequence or timeline and cadence, the tempo about doing it now, 2024, 2025 versus doing it later to the next term. One thing I will mention, you know, where resource gaps do exist, there is the ability to, of course, outsource for look at staffing up. But two big things there we want to be cognizant of is that lag time, right? So if we look to fund a future plan based on reserves, you know, it still takes a few months to put that request proposal together and get it out the door. Likewise, when we hire up, we know there's an onboarding process that, you know, could take several months. So it's that, it's that lag time we want to be cognizant of. So I think with that, I'll turn it over now to Kerry to take us on to planning and development sequencing. And then after Kerry, we'll go to Craig and then back to myself. Thanks.
Awesome. Thanks, Adam. Okay, Kerry. What reserves?
Good evening, committee as a whole. So we're going to look at a couple of slides. They were prepared as a result of a workshop held by senior leadership in 2023 as part of the amalgamation process and kind of coming into our own as Diamond Valley. So what you see here is kind of the conglomeration of all of the plans that contribute to how we grow, how we facilitate business health, manage our assets, protect what's important, how we pay for it, and how we move around. And this brain work kind of is meant to inform what has been done the year that it was completed. And you probably can't see that from there, but they have it on there. And so it was just an inventory. If you can go to the next one, Verona. Thank you. And so this kind of breaks it down in terms of the hierarchy. It's demonstrate what plans we have from a planning perspective, which are the red ones, and which ones we're missing in terms of the Diamond Valley context. So we know that council has funded the MDP, which is the top left bubble there, but there's still a lot of work that needs to occur, as you can see. Presenting it as a hierarchy also allows us to look at where work should or likely needs to be done before moving on to another plan. So a good thing to think about in terms of that is the offsite levies by law and background reports. So in a perfect world, the municipal development plan informs area structure plans and area redevelopment plans, which then feed into the offsite levees by law. Similarly, asset management, transportation master plans, and other servicing master plans would inform that, that background research. And then we have a few kind of easier, I'll call it easier wins at the bottom that you see before council at meetings. So things like municipal enforcement and fire services by law, those kinds of things that we're still working on internally as the management group. If it wants to cooperate with you. Fantastic. Okay, so in my planning world, these things are very important because there is a hierarchy. It's set, it goes all the way from the Land Stewardship Act, which is the Saskatchewan Regional Plan, all the way through the municipal development plan, down through the land use by law, which then sets the rules for subdivision development. There is a lot of interplay between municipal rules, provincial rules, federal rules, studies. It's a lot. So I'm very appreciative of council and the community's understanding and support for the municipal development plan because truly it is going to set the tone for everything else to come under it. Next, please. So the municipal development plan is a statutory plan, as are our area structure plans and area redevelopment plans. I listed what we have for ASPs and ARPs and the years there. So overall, I am shocked and odd and relieved that our ASPs and ARPs are relatively recent in the scheme of things. There are a couple that are getting on in age that we should put in the queue to look at and review. Most ASPs are kind of meant to last about a twenty, thirty, maybe forty, if it's a very large area, your life cycle. And then once we get outside that kind of twenty years for an ASP, then we're looking at what its validity is anymore. And again, for area redevelopment plans, if the region or the town has been going through a big boom, we want to see how relevant the information in those plans still is. I know the offsite levies has been a pretty big discussion at council, so I wanted to put that in here as well. Both offsite levees bylaws were redone in 2022. So again, in terms of plans and implementation, they're fairly new. I wanted to highlight this though, because yes, they're new, but they're misaligned. They were done by two different consultants under two very different scopes and methodologies, which for developers coming to town can be confusing and sometimes frustrating because why are the two sides of the river treated so differently? That being said, until we have a better idea of what our vision and goals are as a community through the municipal development plan, and how we can actually physically build out, informed by our various infrastructure plans, opening up an offsite levy by law for review or rewrite doesn't really accomplish much because we don't have the documents to inform it. Next one, please, Verona. And then I promised Bryn and Todd and Adam that this was coming. The discussion about municipal planning commission. So for municipal planning commission, they have quite a scope for decision making authority in town currently. And again, it varies depending on which side of the river you're on, what that scope is. One of the things that I constantly hear from the councils I've worked under is the desire to have decision driven, make it, data driven decision making. There we go. There's some challenges with municipal planning commission in terms of education and training. There are some challenges in terms of redundancy, overlapping roles, ensuring that we're interpreting the land use by law correctly and the will of council correctly. And then we hear from developers all the time that, well, isn't this another layer of bureaucracy? Can't we make this go faster? Can't we make this go cheaper? Why do I have to come to this? Can't you guys just make this decision? And then sometimes when we're in the meetings themselves, there's questions about servicing or some other department that they're not in the room. So to change or add conditions or have those discussions in the moment is really difficult versus having a development officer be able to just pick up the phone or send an email or say, hey, Craig, you're in the office. Come in here for a second. We need to talk about this, this development proposal. So I'm coming here today with the hope that we can have a discussion more broadly about planning, what our strategy and focus is for the next couple of years as well. And part of that repurposing the municipal planning commission. And my proposal is potentially a municipal development plan steering committee. I think that it would make use of a very engaged municipal planning commission body right now. The people on it are very passionate, very dedicated, and I want to acknowledge that fully. They're very community minded. They want what's best for the community. They have the experience of being in a planning authority position, and they would also be able to help with the communication as members of at large in the greater community, rather than having that just be from administration outwards with the municipal development plan pulling out. Okay, next. And that's where I end.
Thanks, Greg.
Should say, dude, just for calling Craig up, all of these slides, I understand they're quite hard to see with a picture, so we'll make sure those are provided for after. There's lots of details on there. Thank you. Craig, you discussed asset management, please.
Just gonna stand up so I'm not yelling through. So yeah, asset management. Asset management is largely in part, everything that you have been telling. It's often greatly misunderstood, often taken for granted. Asset management starts from the natural environment such as the river, your park and green spaces, to infrastructure, which is your sewer water, your storm, your water treatments, your wastewater treatments, your facilities, whether that's the billings that house the infrastructure that supplies our services to recreation and our municipal, municipal operation buildings and offices. And that's all impacted by growth, age, and development. And when I speak to taking advantage or taking for granted, we all flush our toilets, it goes away, we're happy. Water turn tap on, water flows, it doesn't stink, it doesn't taste bad. We don't get sick from it. Our storm systems, water hits the, melts off the front lawns and runs off our roofs and into the storm and disappears. Hopefully, if it's not stormed, plugged up and causing problems. So sports fields and other assets that we take for granted. There's green spaces, people use them, people want to pay for the privileges in those sports fields or or come out and play in those sports fields, take photographs with their family reunions and their weddings. It entices folks to come to our community when we have beautiful open spaces to come to. Again, it's very easy to take for granted all of those assets that we have, and that includes our street signs or our traffic, huge roads, pollyways. It's, it's, there's so much with asset management to, to wrap your head around, and it's easy to get lost. It's also one of those things, it's really hard to maintain because budgets are, budget is, is limited. Time is limited. And growth is sometimes quick, sometimes slow. And sometimes it's in our benefit and other times it's not. And these are all parts in parcel to, to that asset management piece. Things are going well, we're all happy. When things aren't going well, we take notice. With, with the amalgamation, both municipalities found themselves in a scenario where aging, aging facilities have left us a little bit on the edge of capacity. Infrastructure is to a point where we need to identify our priorities and what's important to maintain and how, how do we proceed with, with maintaining those expensive infrastructure expenses? Putting away money for the future and having the ability to replace those assets as, as they lifecycle. Inventory, collecting the data that's required to, to understand that asset, to be able to prioritize. Collecting GPS data on location, age, lifecycle, having that database that we can pull from and, and at a glance understand. You know, are we sixty million dollars in the future in the next five years to replace, five million dollars to replace this certain infrastructure? So these are all things that, that have really kind of hit us hard and fast with amalgamation. And certainly affects the way we proceed with planning and everything that's planning needs to achieve, but it also starts to bleed into everything else that is, is happening. Maybe that's, that's the song. I could get into more detail, but I think we all know.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah.
Thanks, you.
Thank you, Deputy. Thanks, Greg, for that overview. So that's a good segue into our next slide, which is kind of the bread and butter, the actual priority list. So just for a thought too, on the asset management piece. So we do have a facility study funded for 2024, and really that's the start of the information gathering, which will eventually lead into an asset management program. For context, you know, just coming from Prince George, asset management programming can take upwards of a decade to really go from a starting point to where we're looking at actual lifecycle costs and that kind of thing. So it's, it's a long journey, but I think it's important that at least in a strategic planning session, you really start looking at it now for something to do in the future. So this slide priorities, so this was produced last year. This was a blend of the last management team with input from both previous CAOs, informed by the budget in a lot of ways for 2024, and just based on discussion with, with council. So what we have here is short term, we're calling over the next one to three years. And then that sort of medium term, which could be four to six years or even beyond. The top is internal. So that's what could be handled in-house. Below that is recommending to be outsourced to consultants, and then below that is combined. And I do apologize, it is fairly small to see. So again, we'll make sure council gets caught these of these. But just running through on the internal one. So again, looking at those short terms, financial plan, we are working on that five year financial plan, and we're looking at a proper five year and beyond capital plans. We actually have some long term forecasting there. Utility rates by law, we know that is ongoing, long term planning on tax rates. Fire services by law, we can actually cross that one off the list from the last council meeting. Mutual aid agreements, emergency management plan, asset management system integration. So really here again, based on the 2024 budget, we've got the first step of that to just look at our existing facilities. Records management, that's unlikely to be a 2024 item. That is a major undertaking. It's sort of like buying a new furnace. Large upfront costs for eventual savings. So that is one, at least from administration's perspective, I think it is very important, but I don't see it as being a 24 priority unless council directs otherwise, of course. Consultants, these are the big ones. So master development plan. As we know, that was budgeted in 2024. We're hoping to have the RFP out in April. MDP, again, that's sort of that eighteen to twenty four month window, and there'd be a lot more to follow on that. Fire master plan, that's also currently budgeted for, and depending on the sequencing, we hope to get the RFP out for that prior to summer as well. But again, we want to make sure that's, that's tied into the MDP line process where ultimately council wants to allocate resources to. That infrastructure plan, facilities master plan, and transportation master plan. So these are not budgeted as part of the 2024 cycle, but kicking off the MDP, the fire master plan in 24, these would be excellent plans to lead into 2025 budget. Uh, kicking off the M D P, the fire master plan in twenty four, these would be excellent plans to lead into twenty twenty five budget. And then combined, again, just identifying those gaps in asset management. So uh this is one theme you'll probably. Hear from me a lot over uh, well, it should just be from here onward is asset management. I think it's uh. Uh, a big thing that local governments are doing throughout the the continent. It's something that I think Diamond Valley um laughed at. Probably eventually get on board with as well. I mean, bottom line, as we know, uh, most of the infrastructure buildout was at thirty years after World War Two, and now we're. Kind of at that end of cycling. So just like purchasing an older home, we want to make sure we've got funds available for the future to to replace uh all the parts that were out. Um, medium term, just throw out a few items there. We can see affordable housing strategy, the actual asset management strategy. Uh, tax rate review, water conservation policy. Um, explore transit opportunities, and then like Carrie mentioned, uh really burgeoning those off-site levy bylaw updates. And then beyond that, uh, after the M D P, of course, we'd have items such as the intermunicipal development plan. And uh, once we have a better kind of overview of what our current uh inventory of. Uh, infrastructure is, we'd be able to look at uh, looking at other kind of land assets and that. Um, so I think with that, uh Deputy Mayor, that's sort of administration's overview, and uh we turn back to. The Craig. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate all the time and effort here. Uh, really well laid out, other than. Tiny little bubbles. I did really like that. Like where you have the circles over colored in red. We clearly have a little bit of work to do. When you look at that, it's, you kind of like to see more red than white, but. Um, I was able to squint out most of it and and just really well done all across. So I appreciate administration and Adam, the team's work and everything. Council. I'll turn it over to you guys and girls if we wanna um. Where do you want to start? Counselor Thompson.
I just kind of have one. Eat very well, but I'm sure that I'll see them. On there, or that. Uh, I only have one question, and I recognize the offsite levy bylaw update is stuck in the course this year. However, um, can they be updated to include the fire levies once we get the fire plan done? I just amend that to include that.
Yeah, thanks, uh Deputy Chair. Maybe I'll speak out a turn and go with yes. Yeah. Said it's minor.
Going forward to be able to support our department.
If the key there. So again, if we kind of sequence this, uh. Fire master plan for twenty four. Uh, potentially, again, I don't want to put a hard time on that yet until we get those proposals back. But the idea I think there would be to just uh look at very specific minor amendments without opening up. The entire offset levy bylaws.
Yeah.
Think if we can keep it there, I absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. What's that next? Yeah.
Uh, first, I don't notice an I C F in there, and that is legislatively required. Really soon is it not? Turn over now. She's shaking her head. Um, yeah, that's that needs to be added. That's probably might be something new for Adam. So that's um. Asset management, I'm I'm glad that you're all keen on that. We've been preaching about that for years, but really it's like the details of like the computer system and logging all the inventory and G P S. All that stuff will follow, but if we don't have money for what we find, it doesn't matter. So I'm okay putting off. You know, or it's taking ten years to get really good at getting all the details, but I want to start on the funding for it. You know, I've told everybody in council, I want it just like a percent of amortization that we're working up to and how many years it'll take to work up to that amount, right? Um, so to me, that's super important. Um, transit, I have zero interest in. So I'll just be honest on that. You just like cross that off, I'd be happy. Uh, but I I'm just one counselor. Um. And. Yeah, and then going back to the M P C, M D P, changeover, I'd love it. Um, I don't, what kind of amendments? Because we don't have land use bylaw on here, and we know that the land use bylaw has some major issues and. How is that all going to get worked into this? It's my next.
Would you like an answer to that?
Yeah, I do.
I have document. Give me just a second to find that part.
I will say too, uh Deputy, when Carrie's looking for that, just the asset management piece. Yeah, one uh. One concept I'd like to to explore with council in the future is that the general infrastructure reinvestment fund, so a JRF. And these sorts of funds would look at long-term asset management plans. The idea being they put a little aside every year. And then it starts to accumulate. So um other places have done it, and it uh, yeah, it pays long-term dividends. So it's something we're definitely looking at.
Uh, the dissolution of municipal planning commission would require removal of M P C as the subdivision authority, development authority, and as an advisory committee to council. The amendments that would be required would include rescinding the municipal planning commission bylaw twenty twenty three oh five. Amending land use bylaw twenty one 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 four, which is the land use bylaw on Turner Valley side, amending land use bylaw. Twenty twenty one oh six, the land use bylaw on the Black Diamond side. Um, amendments to the town's two land use bylaws would remove M P C. And have all subdivision and development matters, excepting those under direct control. Decide upon by the subdivision and development officers appointed by the C A O. M P C may be referenced in other plans and policies. At this time, um. I wouldn't recommend having to go through them with a fine-tooth comb. In the absence of an M P C, it would. Fall back to the development authority, which would be whoever council decides is the de- the development authority on those matters.
Um, I, yeah, I'm absolutely tired of giving variances for sheds and M P C. It's a waste of my time. Um, so I'm happy that the subdivision, though, that is a bigger thing, not like when you're just doing a one lot subdivision, but when you're getting. Bigger ones, but then I also know that that all comes down to rezoning, really, is where council gets involved. Um, so are you talking about removing all of it from M P C and giving it uh internally to the planning, or would you move subdivision to council or? So what are your thoughts on that?
You're Adam in the chair. Um, it would be my preference to have the technocrats handle. Technical and legal processes. Subdivision is a highly technical, highly legal process. Um, in its sincerest form, it's quite dry. And. Again, with with the most sincere admiration for people who want to dedicate their time in the veterans of their community. I just, I almost some days feel that it's putting them in a really bad. Thought when we're asking them to make very technical decisions, when they don't have the background, they don't have the time. It's literally our full-time job. We have the access to the engineers and the lawyers and the consultants to make sure that we present. And approve the best development proposals for the town. Um, and again, when you have a committee of citizens that. Might not have any background in any of it, making the decisions. My my preference would be to put it back in the hands of the people that. Went to school and have done this for many years as a technical legal process.
I'm happy with that answer. Um, I do think that if we're gonna consider it, that it needs to be. Up with municipal planning commission, so we don't get. Uh, any blind sides if they're not having to be having to be listening tonight or future council meeting. Um. Yeah, but yeah, I I think I think that how the community looks is very much done at the M D P process and redesignation process. You're right. We don't need to get into into the weeds, especially as we get into, we are a larger municipality now and facing more decisions. Um, and especially, you know, if none of us are here next term, I I know. The learning curve that there was for me going on to M P C when I first came on council, and now even that we've uh amalgamated. My understanding of the Black Diamond side, land use bylaw, like it's with everything else we've got going on, that's been overwhelming. So if I'm finding as a counselor. I'm having a hard time understanding half of our community. I I could, I see the value in putting it back to the people who are doing this on a day-to-day basis. Um, so I kind of still support it.
Yeah. Thanks, Deputy. Just to add on to that, too, we were um looking at this sort of the temperature check initially, and depending on where that goes, then. Yeah, we take it back committee to have the discussion. You're both from there. Just thought first to. Uh, committee, hold the and see where the the read is.
Deputy, you want to go ahead?
Sure. I I uh, I totally agree with this um stuff. Um, I recall with my institutional memory that when Turner Valley um first hired a planner. Full-time planner, because both Turner Valley and Black Diamond at one point had contract planners. And they hired a full-time planner, and it was the intent of the C A O at the time to take to dissolve the M P C because it was. As Carrie is suggesting, and because we have a full-time development authority in a planner. And so I totally agree with with uh this direction. I also agree with the councillor Holiday and and uh. You know, we need to sit down with the commission and and uh, you know, go over everything and the reasons why. And and I think it it just is uh another efficiency that that has been found. So thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, I um, Jonathan, Cindy, and I sit on the M P C, and. There's a lot of times we go and we kind of scratch in our heads as to what we're approving and what we're looking at, um, not because it's a waste of time most times, but because it can be a bit redundant. Um, I know that a lot of our, like our downtown area redevelopment plan, one that was um approved in Black Diamond, that would really help guide. The planning department in terms of, you know, facades or, you know, my my only. One concern, because I know how invested and how long a lot of our members on the M P C have been there for is. Um, they often find a lot of those nuances that exist within the town and and I feel like they really bring a personal touch to. Um, some of the approvals, although some of them, if it's a shed or whatnot. Um, so I'm just, I'm just a little bit curious while I support. Moving away from the M P C, just kind of, I don't want to lose that like personal community touch, if you will, if we don't have. A plan in place. So I just wanted to touch on that.
Yeah, and if and if I may, so one of the things that I've observed um. In my fairly short time, I've been to a couple M P C meetings now. Um, oftentimes, the decisions coming before M P C do have some sort of political or economic implication. Um, which can be a bit of a frustration in the situation. I've heard numerous comments from numerous members of. M P C about those economic and political considerations, and. That's a challenge for me, since those are not material planning considerations, those should never be brought up at the table. And so again, moving away from that framework and reading it in council's direction and given through the land use bylaws, the area structure plans, municipal development plan. Our other plans, studies, policies, really guides administration, how council. Um, is directing us to do our work as administration and guiding the development of the community as informed by the community as your role of councillors.
Thanks, Gary. I appreciate that. You're up.
Thanks, Brendan. Uh, so this topic, Carrie came to present at the Economic Development Committee a month and a bit ago, maybe two months. And this topic came up organically. Um, I'm fairly confident I voiced my opinion. Without any uh, any purity, but since you're taking a temperature check, I'm fine with your plan. Removing the M P C and creating a steering committee for it. With the same.
I'm in support as well. Any comments, Jason? And Jonathan?
Just one. Um, Turner Valley had a five-point asset managed grant. So with this facility study, is that gonna be falling under any provincial or federal grant?
Bottom on that part?
Yeah, Deputy, I'm just uh looking over at, then if everyone knew, we'll probably have to get back to you on that. What I understand though right now is there is a line either the twenty twenty four budget. Or specifically the the hire consultant to look at kind of the state of our facilities. So that's. Asset management is a large portfolio. Each year we'll have different stages, but that initial stage is for that. So I'll um, I'll get back to council the funding source.
Just one more question. It's on the transportation plan. Turner Valley had um, had some off-site levies. Years ago, put away for the loss or for the transportation plan. Do you happen to know how much is in that budget?
Let's get back to council.
Okay, sounds good to hear.
I'll do.
Trans- regarding transportation plan, um, it may not sound important, but. We can't apply offsite levies to anything until we have that transportation plan. So, yes, offsite levies will be down the road, but. We still need to care about transportation because that's what's gonna pay for lights and. And things like that on new construction and new areas. So I think that uh it's it's. Maybe not a priority, but it's not something we should decide on. So it should maybe go over the median. Um, along with the offsite levy bylaw.
Gee. Yeah, thanks so much for bringing this to us tonight. I appreciate the information. One of the things, a few a few items, if I can kind of be random here in my thoughts. Uh, the asset management plan, a couple of years ago, we did have a grant for somebody to come and support Turner Valley side of doing the asset management. We got at the time in that year, or it's twenty twenty one, if I'm not mistaken, we might have been about fifty, not even sixty percent of the assets. Identified. So you might want to pull that up and identify where that's at, see if we can add to it. Um, secondly, transportation plan. Echoing what Counselor Thompson just said, we do need to have that done so that we can manage future growth down the line. Um, one plan that I see missing here that I would really like us to consider is a recreational master plan. Uh, we have some facilities that are getting out of date, and it would be really good to get that into our offsite levels as soon as possible. I would love to see that happen. Uh, in fact, one of our new foundations in town met with me a couple of weeks ago to discuss. What council might be considering for recreation plans for the future. So I think that should be on our radar. I'd like it to be on our radar over the next sixty months, to be honest. Uh, regarding the municipal planning commission and uh dissolving that and and really standing up a steering committee for the M D P, I think that's a brilliant idea. And it really gives the impetus to those residents that it meets, one of our strategic priorities, which we have under experience, right, where we. Really benefit from the experience and knowledge of our residents, and I think that's a powerful opportunity for our residents to really get actively involved in that. As to what their community looks like. I mean, let's be honest, we've heard a lot of feedback over the last several weeks and months regarding proposed cold crossing development. And how there, our residents want more input with that than what may have been already received. So I think if we can. Start generating that uh engagement now would be beneficial for us to really set a good foundation overall as we move forward. I think that's the only ones that I wanted to highlight, to be certain as we move forward. Thanks again for the work you've done. Um, perhaps one item I do want to go back to is the financial plan. What that looks like. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity now to really review how we budget, what philosophy we're using in that as an amalgamated community. Uh, you worked here, Adam, but I did present, and it was defeated a motion for a zero-based budgeting philosophy. And I think that's a great opportunity to really build that now, especially if we're moving forward with a new financial plan, to really understand what we have. What we need so that we can have a long term plan moving forward. Thank you.
You have to answer him. Barry, are you with us?
I only fell asleep a few times here while I was driving. No, I'm actually sitting in the passenger seat, uh, so all good. Just wanted to weigh in on the M P C steering. I think that's a great idea. I think a lot of the. Cogs in the wheel that we need to address from planning perspective for the economic development concerns. Congestion concerns, transportation concerns that are going to flow out of that, uh, need to be covered in that land use by law. And that's where some of those decisions by Kerry's team make it easily streamlined. So I'm in support of exploring that, moving ahead with the steering committee. As well, we don't need to waste, uh, extra time at things that we don't need to be there for. So like you say. As we approve, they don't need us, just get it done. Uh, those are the efficiencies that we wanted. And we want to play a bigger game of baseball. So this is how we get there. I'm sure there's no growing communities that are. You know, having three and four hour M P C meetings when they don't need to and we shouldn't. So totally, totally in support of that. And then just to follow up a bit on councillor Gordon's comments, well put councillor Gordon. I fully agree on the recreational master plan. We really need to focus on that. I've said it before, I'll just say it again for context for. Mister Davy, two thousand and seven, I went to the first open house. At the time Kelly Tucker was running for mayor against two others and the topic of what are you going to do for recreation came up. Every candidate up there, I think it was about fifteen, uh, had ideas on what to do. And to date, not one thing since two thousand and seven has been done. To grow our recreational capacity on a real level. You know, we've added a ball diamond here and there that's been. Pieced together over two and three years and a budget scrape here and a budget scrape there, right? Our volunteers like the Lions Club built a great park, a great partnership with the town, the Lions Club, the community. But that's only filling one small cock. So we really need to look at, we know the pool is dead in six years. That's a reality, can't deny that. So we have to begin planning. We have an extremely engaged group. Of ladies right now. Foundation, uh, that Jonathan met with, that have lots of energy, lots of great ideas. They want to be engaged. They. Have young children. They want those children to have something in town and I think that they're totally correct. And I think. That we have to start that work. If we don't start it, it's going to be another ten years and another ten years. So we know we're growing. We know we have. Huge capacity coming. Uh, so let's start identifying the needs. Let's start identifying the lands. Uh, let's include that into one of these proposals that we have coming up. And let's start picking off the low hanging fruit because this is going to be one of them if we start the work. So M D P hundred percent, let's get that moving. Um, but let's throw some resources at. Some of the other components that we know are absolute factors for the future of our growing town. That's my thoughts. Uh, support the steering committee on M P C. Other than that, uh, great stuff. Thank you. And. I'll just hit my little thing and Vern will let you know when I want to talk. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Drive safe. Say hi to everyone for us. Okay, I had, I had one question for you, Kerry. I was talking to Barry today. Um, it was something that came up. I don't know if it was at our last meeting, but you mentioned that the application fee for new subdivisions or new builds was quite cheap. For us. I was wondering if you would be so kind as to. Give us a rough, it doesn't have to be tonight. I was hoping maybe at the next meeting. But it was something I wanted to bring up because if we're super cheap. I think that we should, I don't know if that needs a bylaw or if that's an administrative change for that fee. You can go ahead.
Yeah, so. There has been a lot of discussion with the various C A Os about the timing of coming forward with planning fee changes. So there's. Kind of two approaches. We could just change the rates that are in the fee schedule. That you just. That's the correct word that I'm looking for, adopted by resolution. Thank you. Um, it's not a bylaw currently. I believe Vernon is working on. Putting it into some sort of, thank you, Vernon. So there is the ability to amend those and adopt the new fee schedule. I would, and I'm planning to at the very least bring forward. A restructured fee schedule for planning. Again, with this different C A Os, there's been discussion about the appropriate time to do that, whether it's immediately or at next budget. Um, I think for the time being, the conversation has been at next budget, come forward with the restructure. But if council so desires for those changes to be brought forward sooner, I can.
Was there a lot of work behind that in terms of administrative? Like if we just told, like if we said, okay, you're busy enough, next budget is totally fine versus. Hey, it's going to take me a half a day to put this together and then all of a sudden we're bumping up. Like, you know, it it kind of would come down, I think for me is how much more would we be getting? I think that this would be a good avenue to help support our planning department in terms of additional revenue. So if, you know, if we can increase the fee. From bird's eye view, but that might give you the opportunity to not to have someone more experienced in your department rather than hiring somebody that has less experience. I think that that's worth the discussion for the support.
And if if I may continue. I think that there are a few quick wins, that there are some things that regionally and more broadly are. Very priced very, very cheaply compared to the amount of effort that goes in. It's always going to be a balance. Development will never one hundred percent pay for itself. It will be subsidized in some manner. Um, otherwise you're just going to scare off everybody and then there will be no growth. So, but I think that coming back with a few quick wins. And then maybe a few line items that are completely absent that we've been running up against some recent challenges or. And or opportunities for fees. So if I could maybe throw two bonus ones in there. And I could probably turn something around in the next month or two. It'll be a little bit ahead of. Budget, but it'll enable us to maybe capture a few more fees.
That'd be great. Yeah. Okay. Appreciate that. Jonathan?
Yeah, further follow up regarding our planning since Kerry is here. Couple of things that have come across our radar recently that I think we need to consider. Is the water allocation policy as we develop, what does that look like? And then I think part and parcel of that, I'm not sure which comes before, is a growth strategy. Uh, if our water. Availability only allows for X number of more residents, we already have a substantial number of units on the books. Hoping to be developed over the next little while. What does that look like? How are we allocating water to them? And how quickly are we allowing them to build? Uh, I think we need to really consider that. I don't know if that's something we can develop in the next sixteen months. But it's probably on the radar as we move forward.
Excellent. So, baby.
Yeah, thanks, deputy. And again, thanks for all that feedback. So. Again, what we'll bring back here is a sequence Gantt chart, right? Because just to give some perspective. You know, in terms of master development plan, fire master plan and hiring that other planner. Those are the three priorities from now until summer. So anything. We'd have to draw up one of those to focus on one of these, right? So that's kind of where I want to be laser focused on those big ones. Get those out the door. Started. But again, I think with a nice clear concise Gantt chart, we can bring that back. Everyone can look at it and see what kind of. Uh, potential budget enhancements to be looking at for future years, right? To to make sure you're able to get. A lot of these consultant led plans done at the same time. Maybe just turning over to Kerry, uh, just in terms of rec master plan. Can you just walk us through how that interfaces with the M D P and that sort of thing, please?
So the municipal development plan has requirements under legislation, one of it being. The growth strategy, you have to show where growth is prioritized. So I think that. Maybe some of that work that you're considering will be captured in the M D P. With regards to the rec master plan, again, it kind of fits in in a way that we want to. Have a big enough parcel allocated for whatever the proposed. Facility is, whether it's a new pool or a new soccer field or whatever that looks like. But it doesn't really need to get that specific. So. In in some ways, they're quite separate. But then it ties again into, can we know what our. Goal and purpose and desired. Highlights are for growth. So we want to, you know, be a walkable community or we want to be an environmentally friendly community or we want to prioritize this dot or the other thing. As part of the municipal development plan, direct that growth in the directions. We have our servicing plans, our transportation plans, our rec plant. And those can fit into the offsite levees, which then when the permit comes in for a development permit with our new land use by. Yes, so many new things that we need. But the the rec master plan can definitely kind of fit in more fluidly.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that. So to clarify, there is non budgeted item. That would be something I'd probably recommend budget twenty five. So you have. Because again, too, even though we can outsource a lot of these items to consultants, you still have the span of control issue, right? So you only have. A carrier eye railing onto multiple consultants. They're looking at multiple concurrent. Consultations with the public and that. So if our span of control starts to expand too much, going back to those B B Cs and lowercase Cs. I would just cut some of those Cs which were drop service level in order to accomplish these Bs. So. That's something we want to be cognizant of too. Um, so I think if I'm hearing it from the committee. Bring it back into a Gantt chart, have a look at that to see if it's sequenced and then kind of shift accordingly. Again, though, we do have the M D P, fire master plan and the facility review. Those are already budgeted and those are. Or you already start. So we'll have three big ones going. When we bring back that document for further review, council can have a look and. Uh, kind of decide if if you want to shift accordingly.
Yeah, I think the focus remains on those three. That shows out by summer, right? Um, before I jump over to you, I just wanted to ask Craig one question. How's our leak detection coming along? Yeah, okay, just was looking for a quick update if there was anything because you mentioned a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago that you were in the process of getting that out.
Yeah, so I have, uh, I have a contractor organized and just. Putting together all the data that he's going to require. To start that process, I'm not going to push the process, uh, so too early in the year because it's always nicer and more convenient. For everyone that's, uh, doing this project to do it when it's snow and not sappy. We'll probably do it in the first thing.
Perfect. Thanks for the update.
Again, uh, the recreation master plan, I think the the biggest need for that and it would fall under the same kind of medium. Because why why it's needed is we can't collect offsite levees. Uh, yeah, until we have the recreation master plan. So that's another one that would fall under the medium. Priority, the two departments, I guess it is. So we need that to apply outside levees. As the transportation plan, but the fire is the priority, I believe, because of the situation of the. Station. Three and the diamond, um, being in the floodstone and and. If the, if other things start growing over there, it will be really important to be able to collect offsite levy to the fireball.
Thanks, councillor Thompson. Any closing comments here, council? I think we've got the top three. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Two things, or the one thing that's been coming up at our last council meeting, uh. The berm upgrade and discussion around the bridge, which ties into the fire hall being a flood plain. If that bridge really is, uh, I think. Eric, can you call it a hypodermic needle or something, a pinch point that's causing all of our problems and it's bigger than us. I don't think, I think. That shouldn't get lost. Because everything that we're planning on doing and wanting to do will get thrown out the window for five years if we get a flood. Like twenty thirteen that devastates us, right? So, um, I think that. Uh, I I don't know what the steps are on that, um, but we we need to not lose sight of that one. So that's. Yeah, protecting the assets, you have a little bubble for that. Um, I think that's probably key.
Yep, please go ahead.
Yeah, except do we, uh, so yeah, we're not losing sight of that. We're, uh, since last council meeting, we are reaching out to the province to see where. When they're going to release this new flood map. So when, when we find out when that comes, uh, that can help inform the discussion with the province to say, okay. You know, we still have this grant to look at raising the burbs, uh, province, will you then raise the bridge? So I think that'll be a lot of future discussion. I think too, that would be. Quite a bit of policy level discussion too, from council to ministry. So we can talk on that then. Uh, but ideally that would come back as part of a capital plan item for five years. So even though it is a strategic item. Uh, ideally, if the funding is in place, the province is a partner, that would be a capital project. So, what are your thoughts?
Hopefully it's their bridge, so they should pay for it. But when it comes to. My frustration with the financial plan and and our capital planning process is that. It's not a great plan because we have a ten year plan that exceeds any amount of funding sources that we have. So and to me, it's always been a wish list. Like, we, I would really like to see that narrowed down to what we can actually afford. And I like your your curve idea. It's great. But to me, like, we can't on our operating budget, it's, you know, run a deficit. We shouldn't be doing that on our capital budget side. That really needs to get fixed. Because it's been that way since I've been on council, um, that we don't have a clear what we can actually afford and space these projects out accordingly. We also have a problem that comes up every year because the Turner Valley side had done local improvement levees at one time and the Black Diamond side didn't. And then there's all this contention over when we replace somebody's road, but it will happen this year when we replace first app that anybody on Windsor that's. In Turner Valley side will come and say, well, are they paying an office or can you local improvement levy for their road to get? Because we're paying it on our taxes. Um, like there's a fairness piece that post amalgamation, we never. We've just been ignoring it. Especially if we start to add more additional funding for finance going forward. Those, those people are, I mean, the condo people always cry foul because they pay for their own roads. But the people paying local improvement levy still are also going to cry foul. So I'm just saying this more as information to give you background. I don't. If sponsors want to let you know, but that's something that'll be commonly here.
Thanks, Cindy. Capture all that. Uh, okay, council, final comments. You guys can rock papers scissors for a comment. Not much, Jonathan, go ahead.
I I do have a quick question before councillor Holiday. Could you explain the curve real quick or a curve as you say? Because I I I think it's a brilliant idea, especially when we're going back and forth on how do we do full cost recovery for our utilities. I love the curve idea. I think it's a wise way to move forward. Give us a bit of a background on it, please.
Absolutely, deputy. So, not an accountant, so I'm saying this as a generalist. So Prince George, we take one percent every year. So. Do zero percent taxes. You always start with a one percent. You take that one percent, you automatically put it into the chair fund. Accumulates over your several years and then his projects need to be replaced to go back to time. Funded capital to buy your plants. It's not a wish list that he prioritized. So, okay. Your general infrastructure investment fund after three years has X amount of dollars. And now we're going to fund it year four to replace. Capital project tax. So one feeds the other. Again, it takes some time to get up to that, right? Because even with a five year funded capital plan. Again, it takes some time to get up to that, right? Because even with a five year funded capital plan. So we sort of need that asset management plan to help form that five year capital. So that way it's. New roads and that are paved in an equitable manner. So again, it starts in a high level. If we go back to the bubble side with. Municipal development plan, financial plan, that's the top level, and then all the rest of them starts to reform down. So in other words, this is not a one year fix. Does take several years to get there, but that's the general concept of the church. Is you take dedicated funding every year that is not allocated to operating expenses. Put it aside in a dedicated reserve, and then that helps. Prince George, it was for replacements of a lot of underground assets, but again, that would be part of how council lays out the policy. It's something we could look at exploring at a future meeting, but it does have. Obviously, with. Any funded capital list, you need a funding source, so. That either comes from taxes, selling land, or grants, or a mix of the three. So something we can certainly bring up at a future meeting to look at that. Or potentially a future year, but again, cognizance of how many other items we've got going on plus selection. Yeah, there's lots to think about for that. Is that kind of answer, cancer that?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Because once I was thinking, do we do it flat rate? You know, we've got what, twenty three hundred residents or individual resident dwellings, a flat rate per year? I mean, twenty three hundred residents, five hundred bucks a year, you got two hundred and thirty grand, boom, it goes right in there, right? So we start having a realistic funding model that doesn't necessarily go on our utility rates, which is user generated. You use more, you pay more, property taxes percentage based on. If you have a nice property, potentially you could be paying more. So I'm just thinking something more equitable, but that really filled me in. Thank you.
Did close this off?
Yeah, just jumping on what Counselor Gordon said about water allocation. And and I'm interested in how specific you can get into that in MDP, because my biggest concerns. It's not just water allocation, but also the ability to provide services to certain areas. If we know that certain things are unrealistic now. By just saying, oh, well, like, we had Marie Nelson in our last thing with La Calda. If we know we can never provide sewer to that area or something like that, or we don't have enough water for certain areas. Like, it it feels like we kick decisions down the road for these future plans. But that's lost property tax. If somebody can do something with their property, you know, ten years earlier, you know, that that money. For development, you know, that's huge impact, just because we're not making decisions. But I'm also concerned that we have all this development knocking on our door and we've annexed more land than we have water for. And I don't want. You know, one area to take that all up, and then we have all these other areas that would have been cheaper and easier to service. And less expensive to maintain over the long term. I don't want them to not get developed while we're servicing a really expensive area. Not just initially, but also replacement, just like. There really needs to be. I think this needs to be looked at. I'm hoping it's part of the MDP, but then I also know, like, our last MDP was pretty fluffy. Right? And area fairy. So I don't know how specific we can get into the MDP, but. Um, I, but these are concerns that are facing us, like, within the next six months, and the MDP is going to be here now.
Yeah, I think, Deputy, for sort of Carrie. Really understand. I think one thing that maybe I'll have to tell. Well, everyone already knows, but a hard truth here, there's. Again, back to the priorities, the growth is coming faster than we can respond. So now what we're trying to do is. Uh, triage the needs of council and the community, if I'm hearing it. And so what that means is there will be some items left on the table. So do it now versus do it later, because again, even if we look to. Utilize reserve funds to hire up on consultants, which I probably would not recommend back to that span of control matter in our reserves. Probably not in a position where I want to look to use those. It's simply too many things going through an hourglass. So again, that's why that sequencing sequencing is important. Then without, I'll just turn over to Carrie.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, Counselor Gordon and Counselor Holiday, both the water allocation policy. What I would have said a month ago is going to be very different than what I say today in light of MPE's updated. Information that they provided to Shruck. Originally, in the Shruck meeting that I sat in on, the operators quoted seventy five hundred people as our top end. And. After that, MPE provided additional detailing, which is significantly more population than seventy five hundred. So I'm no longer freaking out. Therefore, the water allocation policy really at this point in time isn't on my strategic priority list for planning. My department has mapped out all of the properties that we currently have approvals on. That we have applications on and that we've had pre-application meetings on, as well as former approvals that have lapsed. And all of those lands together. Yeah, I'm not concerned at this point. If we were to be looking at another annexation, then I would be. Concerned, but at this point. Like Adam said, there's a limited amount of capacity and. We're probably going to be looking more seriously at. Restrictions on growth in. Ten, fifteen, twenty years, not in the next five. So in terms of where that falls in the scope of municipal development plan, again, municipal development plan. And why I'm. I'm very excited about it for this community as an amalgamated community, and I agree with you. Typically, municipal development plans are very high level. They all sound the same. They're all full of motherhood and apple pie statements. And they don't really give a lot of meaningful direction to planning, whereas I think that this one has the opportunity to be a lot more and a lot different. Having two communities come together that have different backgrounds and different goals historically, I think that this is a really interesting opportunity. To. Really define what the priorities of the community are. Are the priorities. You know. Good use of existing infrastructure. Are the priorities. Cheap housing on greenfield lands. Are the priorities cleaning up brownfields and making sure that those are used. To the highest and best use of that land is the priority perks, perks, perks. Is the priority just environment in general, dark, dark sky compliance. Um, and fire smart and landscaping. So I think that these are the things that. Seeking that direction from the community and from council gets me really excited about this plan. And that's where the water piece can fit in is where. Is the direction coming from the community and from council of how to manage this precious resource? And then that would be able to help inform the scope of any future studies and bylaws.
It's scary. Hello, you okay with that? Spirit answer. Okay, council. Last call. Appreciate everything. Both the discussions and the reports were fantastic. Thanks for spearheading that. No, I already gave us call, Heather.
Just wondering if there's. P schedule. And. Direction to the strategic plan.
Thanks, deputies.
Regular meeting.
Won't be able to get it off the next regular. So from here now, I got the feedback. If there's enough information, the committee can send it to council. Bring us back in a report for April timelines. I just want to look to Carrie for those couple of quick tweaks to the fees. We could put that one as an item after MDP, fire master plan and the planner hired, so a few months from now. So we can at least capture some of those fees back before budget.
I just don't want it to get lost. So I think that this committee should be making recommendations up so that we don't lose it. Because if it's not an emotion, it's too easy to lose it. So I think there seems to be a kind of motion to make up the council so that it's not lost. Because it doesn't show up in the minutes unless there's a resolution. There's no action track unless it's a resolution. So this committee's job is to recommend that.
Well, I'll make the recommendation. This time for which meeting do you think that your report will be ready?
Got through, deputy. We have this report back for. Second may day, roll. So I can just confirm a few consultant items. And then with regards to the fees, I just want to again look over to Carrie for those tweaks. We say by summer.
Um, yeah. Again, it's it's about scope. So if we're just going to hit like the five high points and add in those two. Hopefully not missed opportunities, because. So on one of the telecoms. Fee, we don't have a telecoms fee. We've had somebody inquire. I would like to be able to charge them. So those are really, really quick. Wins, because I just basically told Verna telecoms, five thousand dollars.
Put a line on. Yeah, okay.
But a couple of the other ones. Would require a bit of comparison in the area, but again, it's it's a scope issue. You want me to change the, you know, top five that I think are completely out of whack? Do you want me to look at all of them?
I mean, you're the planner. And so I was trying to default to your expertise here. I I I want you to do what you think is best for the P schedule. So if you want more time to change more stuff, I'm I'm okay with that. But like you said, I also don't want you to miss the opportunity to capture some of this stuff either. Probably doesn't make sense to bring in two different bunches. I don't know if you want to just add the telecom one to our next meeting and then bring something back later in May or June. I'm, if this is new, this I'm dropping it on you tonight, so I just was looking for additional ways to help generate, Adam.
Let us ju- jump in there, Deputy. An idea perhaps is, what do we keep the scope narrow to gain those immediate wins? Uh, in the next few meetings and then. Scale it back up as part of next year's budget to capture the rest, so that we have a mix of easy wins that. Gain some, hopefully some revenue. Mixed with, give us a few more months, looking the next budget to try to gain some of those bigger ones. Network.
Yeah, more than agreeable. Appreciate it. That works.
That the committee recommended counsel. I don't even know how to word this, because. Recommended counsel, they would go up on the next agenda for our approval. That the strategic priority report be presented at the second meeting in April.
Thank you for work, Stephanie. If we can just kind of gain the intent, and then I think we can tweak it. Legislative ease.
So then for the. P schedule. Recommend counsel that the P schedule. Be amended. Uh, by the second meeting in June. That okay, Carrie?
Yeah.
Be brought back.
It needs to be more specific to planning, like the planning P schedule. Or I know that you know what we're talking about, but I'm hearing some whispering tomorrow right here, so. Specifics, yeah. If you want to capture that in the recommendation.
Will do, deputy. I think if we're hearing it, we're looking for. The wins that we can capture right away. So we'll review that, make best recommendations on that.
Yeah, my intent was not to add to workload whatsoever. So if this is something that's not ready. Just bring it back to us and say we need more time. It's not something that I'm pressing administration on. Just wanted to bring it up to see if there was wins that we could capture in the next couple of months. And I also thought maybe it would slow some things down for you guys, because I know that you've been so busy. If someone sees a new update list, they say, maybe I'll wait a couple of months before I put forward that application. I don't know. I wanted to just bring it up to see how you guys felt about it. So Heather, did you have another one? Do we need one for MPC?
Can't really direct administration at this point, so they'll come up with a plan. And we'll agree on them. I agree, like, if it's, if they need an extension, if they have a look at it by the time we're going to load on them. They can tell us, hey, they're not going to get this done till August.
Yeah, step, you think we got the intent, capture this back for the committee to send it to.
Awesome.
Thank you, the motion of the MPC.
Yeah, what would you like? Just to bring it to the.
Well, because I, because. Well, I don't know if it has to go to council first and then go to the committee technically, so.
So bring that one, best. Oh, sorry, okay. So we have that one's for the fee schedule and for the strategic.
The first one.
Do you want, are they together right now?
April, they are, but I can break them.
There should be seven.
Okay, so we'll vote on the strategic planning one first. Just as a recommendation. Okay, council, all those in favor? Okay, and then the second one is for the fee schedule.
Yeah, the second one for that.
All those in favor? Those are based, both carried, you know, I think. Okay, oh, great. And then we're going to get one from Cindy.
Future of the MPC as a discussion. Maybe the whole recommends. How to discuss the future of municipal planning mission at the next, not the next one, I guess, because we can't meet that.
People don't need to.
That's next possible, which I don't think you date. If Carrie wants, she'll question. April third, she's got the date.
Hey, council, I think those are the only three. All those in favor? That's very dynamic, I think. Okay, are we okay to move on? We're okay from the council strat plan priorities? Okay, perfect. All right, well, let's move on to amalgamation. Barry's not here, so and I certainly didn't, I didn't prepare a big list here, so. Oh, yeah, and then any administration, yeah, send them out, please. Thanks. We can take a circle for them to go for.
Thanks, deputy.
Yeah, of course. Barry, are you, are you talking in three point two here? Or is this something?
If I may. It's it's more. I think it's a general conversation. Blows into the the growth that we're predicting, the MDP that we're looking at. And to give any background. Uh, wins, losses, negative, positive, Adam. Uh, would be a part of the agenda on this one as well. Otherwise, I didn't have any specific identifiable. Uh, item that I thought was really, you know, a head on important. I think our discussion so far on the challenges and the needs that we already have kind of form. Really what we wanted to get to in an amalgamation discussion. So unless someone else had something specific about amalgamation. I I would think that this was more, it was put on there as a part of the strategic plan in informing Adam. But I think he's got a great grasp on the issues that we're looking at. Slide showed that we just had Carrie's explanation of growth. I'm very happy to hear. That we have new numbers from MPE that do justify. The old adage of what we we knew we had for growth, so. Yeah, I'm I'm going to open it up to everyone else and.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mary Crane, for kicking it off. I'm just going to open the floor. Cindy's going to start us off here and. I think maybe if we just, we want to hit some of our highlights or or some of our things that maybe we need to focus on. Otherwise, I think the last conversation we just had gave a lot of insight. Otherwise, I think the last conversation we just had gave a lot of insight.
Yeah, the one thing I've noticed, um. Recently is that there seems to be a disconnect between like, I feel like we're really moving forward. And there's been a lot of pros and and good things that have come of amalgamation. But I I think we've been not doing such a great job of letting everyone know because we're just busy working. Uh, and so we've got quite a bit of like negative letters to the editor and the Western wheel. Uh, people criticizing things, uh, that are completely. Not founded in the reality of what's going on. Um, and I don't know if we have, you know. Like just sour grapes from, you know, the plays that have moved on. And I'm not sure what it is, but I feel like it's been very successful in in my view. Uh, but that we're not selling ourselves as well as we should be because we're still so into the work of it. Um, and, you know, transferring over with new CIO, all that. Um, but I'm really proud of the organization and where we've come in this last year. Uh, and and I can see like into the future how this is going to be so great for the community. But I I I'd like to somehow get that out there better. Um. Not just because it's going to be election in fifteen months or whatever it is, but just eighteen months, I don't even know what it is, but.
Don't campaign yet.
Yeah, I'm not trying to campaign, but I I I think that it, we're not celebrating our administration team that's done such a great job. Uh, to get us to the point that we're at right now. Um, and it makes their life harder if people are still criticizing and coming up with these old complaints and old things. Um, and we're doing nothing to counteract it. So that's my thoughts. We can take it as, oh, we can take it as a counselor. We're used to getting complained to. I don't think it's fair for administration.
Yeah. No, that's really well said, and I I think you really nailed it at the beginning. Everyone's just so busy working. Uh, I think that a lot of us by Christmas time are pretty tired. Um, and that's administration right through to council. Um, tired of being overworked, tired of being over criticized. Um. Tired of looking for, I shouldn't say tired of looking for new employees, but there was a tall word last year, uh, between. Um, two CAOs, a new fire chief, a new planner, a new finance manager. I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on, plus all the change. Um, like the people leaving and you learning all, losing all that that institutional knowledge and whatnot. So, uh, yeah, I I couldn't agree more. I think that we're not celebrating enough of this stuff. But I I hope, because we haven't heard recently, we heard when, uh, Corinne left, how tired our administration was. And we really took that to heart. And I think that through the budget cycle, we tried not only to maintain some of the efficiencies that we found. But we tried to listen to administration when they asked for new staff in certain places. We were, I would like to think agreeable to some of that. Um. We haven't heard if administration is feeling better, quote unquote. Potentially, they're still tired. Um, it's nice to see some smiling faces at that table from time to time. Because the last year leading up to Christmas, I think a lot of us were burnt out. And I think we're just in a fog, you know, like it was hard to really celebrate because you just felt like, okay, got that done. And then the next day you're right back into something else. Um, and that was, I know I can speak for us, that's what it felt like for us. Um, going through the CIO hiring process was was extensive, um, hundred and six resumes. And that was just one position, you know, um, and here you are. Um, but yeah, I I couldn't agree more. I think, uh, if we have the time or if there's resource available, I'm not sure what you'd pick to celebrate. But I think that administration has done a fantastic job. Um, the teams have really come together, the fire departments have really come together. Matt Hogan and his guys have worked really hard under really difficult circumstances as well. Um, I could go on and name pretty much everyone in every department from Lisa to Monique. Uh, because everyone's tired, uh, and I don't know where we stand on that. So, um, and maybe it's still a little bit too fresh for you to to kind of get that feel. But I'm sure some people have told you how the last year and a half has been. So I'll leave it at that and open the floor if anyone else wants to say.
Yeah, I think that, uh, Cindy, I know you're right, celebrating little successes. I also recognize that I said all along, this isn't going to be an overnighter. And we're into this just over a year and a bit now. And, uh, so I think that everybody's done a great job and I can see why they were exhausted. But I really like the forethinking of, of forethinking with our strategic priorities. Because I said all along, this isn't going to be organized, this is going to be five year process. And, uh, even when I was campaigning, you know, but people want to see instant results. And that part of where we're getting some of the complaining from is they just don't understand the processes that you've got to go through to get there. And, uh, so I think that we've got the staff in place to, good professionals to move forward and and, uh. And start getting things done, but it's it's not going to be overnight, you know, it just isn't. So I appreciate all the work that everybody did and, uh, we do need to celebrate some successes and, uh. Well, keep moving forward.
Yeah, and even prior to dealing with JFAC, you know, we were going through JFAC and then had to walk into an election. And then, you know, and that, you know, like Cindy mentioned, I know that we're kind of looking ahead. Um. But part of not getting out some of this messaging is. I don't want, I don't necessarily want to see a completely different council next year because of the amount of work that it's taken. A lot of us to get to this point. Um. So if we could, if we could try to get some messaging out that, hey, this has been done, this has been done. Um, and show the residents, say like, hey, amalgamation is or has been working. And these are points A through B or C. Um. It might give some of us a chance to get back in these seats next year, not that, again, I'm petitioning as well. But, um, it for me coming on, um. At the very end of amalgamation, it it was a tall order in terms of catch up for me. And a lot of people did in the seats longer than I have.
Yeah, thank you for that, the comments, the feedback. I. Just a few items. So, you know, I chat with the mayor a bit on this, see, you know, it. Amalgamation and one year it could be tied into the strategic plan. Make. One idea we could look at is perhaps, you know, I could kind of finish my scan internally and externally and bring something back to a future. Uh, committee, the whole meeting to look at, um, how we can report it out. One thing I noticed was all the department annual reports were actually a very good snapshot of the first year. Maybe a combination of that with, uh, you know, a few pages from myself once I kind of conducted that scan. Uh, to say, hey, here's what's going well, here's what we still have to focus on. And look at that after the strategic plan, because the strategic plan kind of informs that, hey, everyone wants things done now versus it. This actually takes quite a few years. Said something absolutely we could look at. Uh, yeah, just internally, what I'm hearing, um. You know, in a nutshell, it's change management. You know, so back to that analogy where, um, you know, we had two duplexes, different color siding and roofs. Uh, now you have one house, one mailing address, you have the same color siding on the outside. Now we have to do all the work internally. And like any great rental project, it's made kitchen this year, bathroom next year, and so on. So, uh, really what I'm looking at internally there is, you know, a series of, uh, sort of talent management strategy. Policies to look out, we can get to a sustainable tempo for our staff. So we're not, um, because again. Don't want any more turnover. So for me, what's really important is to actually look at how we build this as, uh, you know, employer of choice. Or we're actually looking at succession management, we can build as a long term, strong team. And that'll take time, but some of those pieces we're, um, already starting to look at, I think, over the next six or so months. Would really be, um, ensuring staff do have a sustainable tempo, they are taking off on vacation and that kind of thing. And again, that's all going to come out of that strategic plan where it's all mapped out, so we won't be able to accomplish. Um, and maybe I'll just take this opportunity to really, uh, definitely thank the team, they've made my transition, uh, so far quite simple. And, uh, yeah, just an internal thank you. I think what we're going to look at doing maybe is, uh, you know, just staff barbecue to, uh. Yeah, try to raise morale and have a bit of a thank you as the weather's getting warm.
Awesome. Very extended. Good, yeah.
Yeah, I can follow up. I'm a huge fan of celebrating wins and communicating them. So I almost heard a motion from Brendan, a recommendation that we do that. Because honestly, we do need to do that. The community needs to know what what wins have we seen because we've amalgamated. And, you know, I've got so many things coming through my head, financial stability. You know, the amount that was spent operating budgets in twenty twenty two prior to amalgamation, what that looks like coming in. So we have financial stability, we have workforce stability that Craig has led in our, in our public works and parks department. There are certain pieces that we can identify, and as you mentioned already, Adam. The staff reports, that's a great place to mine these wins from. That noted that are specific to amalgamation, perhaps in your your biweekly or weekly management team meeting. You can begin identifying what those wins are from a planning side of thing. What wins have we seen because we're amalgamated? That's what the community wants to hear, what is happening because we've amalgamated? And we can, we can speak till we're blue in the face, but the reality is, I love to have it communicate. Be effective in that communication so that we can point to this as a win, this is why. And this is will be the 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 benefit that we get to receive from it.
Yeah, I think, and I think. What really well said, Jonathan, I think that in the past, we've been a bit fearful of celebrating because there's there's often backlash that is associated with that. So you make a Facebook post and then all of a sudden there's a bunch of naysayers and keyboard warriors that are, well, why didn't you do it this way? The 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 parade rerouting was a good example of that. We tried to relay that to the community and then. There must have been twenty different routes that were planned on the Facebook page all of a sudden from people that had no idea what to do, right? And excuse my being blunt, but, um. I think that we just need to get out and celebrate when we can, and then we'll deal with the naysayers and that. Because I don't mind navigating the Facebook posts, I try to do that as often as I can. Um. Because I just, you just base them with facts. I don't take it personally and I just tell people, you can't do it this way because it can't be done that way. Um, so I think that if we get back to just trying to make those posts and not being afraid of what might come of them. Um, we might see and be able to celebrate more of those successes.
Yeah, and if I may, one of the things where I'd like to see what we're celebrating the wins from, if I can say from a council perspective. Is the direction that we set based on the MGA requirements we have. So for instance, the long term health and viability of the community, but as well the safety of the community. I mean, with this is the first time, I don't know how many years, we've had a full complement in our fire department. That's huge. Uh, that there, that supports the safety of our community, that's a win to me. And that speaks to, uh, the vitality of the leadership that has come in because of the changes we've made. So let's celebrate that, let's announce it, let's communicate.
Any thoughts?
Absolutely, Deputy. So if I'm. So I got to recapture this from the committee, they've sent a recommendation to council, so, um. For the quick side for quick wins, you know, celebrate, communicate those wins out. They are various platforms, um, it's just communications to the community. Uh, which I think is fairly simple to do. And then sort of bigger picture, look at sort of a, um. More inclusive or comprehensive perhaps, okay? Some amalgamation report after the strategic report to come back to. Maybe the whole to look at to, uh, for council to actually release sometime in the summer. To mine kind of all that data.
Yeah.
As they think, motion to me.
I like it.
Yeah, okay.
Recommendation, pretty much. Can, did you capture anything? I saw that.
I think one of the challenges we've been facing is that we've just gone through a huge period of inflationary growth. Um, and other things happening. And so as well as the West End Sewer Lagoon project, that was four hundred thousand dollar hit to our budget. So people, of course, were all hoping with the amalgamation that they were going to see their taxes go down. Uh, but they weren't realizing how much their taxes were going to go up if we hadn't amalgamated. And that some of these things were just going to happen, but they weren't, of course, weren't aware of them. So they didn't know what was coming down the road. Uh, so now, you know, we've had to increase. Um, some budgetary items and and to keep up with that. And we're going to have to because we haven't been doing our proper asset management and funding for future capital. Um, so people are going to see that as negative against amalgamation. And really it had nothing to do with amalgamation, other than we are a better run municipality that is putting, yeah. Having practicing sound fiscal management where we were. Right, so something that will seem negative to the residents because they'll see it in their tax and utility bills. Is actually an extremely positive thing, right? So I don't know how you explain that. But to me, it's like the unfortunate part of amalgamation is, yes, all the savings, uh, went strictly straight to West End the very first year. Right, the savings that, you know, the council, council, the CIO, or, you know, we had projected, you know, that four hundred thousand dollar savings from that. It was immediately gone. Um, so, anyhow. My two cents.
So the recommendation on the table, if we're okay with that, Verna? Little like snapshot. Of something that's going on and then the long term one later down the road?
Try to read back.
The intent.
Read this back, Deputy, so I can capture for Verna. So, uh, the recommendation committee back to council would be two parts. One, to communicate, uh, what we're doing well, the quick wins and amalgamation. Let's, uh, message out to the community. And again, that can be captured via, you know, regular posts and that sort of thing. And again, details, I'll talk with Nick and Bruno on that. Then the longer term one would be, uh. Committee recommendation, council for administration to bring back. Um. An amalgamation, sort of one hearing review report. Uh.
A snapshot.
Snapshot, early summer timeframe. Sorry, I know it's not in, uh, legislative ease, but, uh.
Yeah, just like, yeah, a couple of things from public works, you know, leak detection. This is how many leaks we've solved in the first month of leak detection or. Um, look, we've got a new street sweeper, look at what a great job it's doing. Like, I mean, they don't have to be huge, look, we saved one point five billion, million dollars in our budget. Like, we don't have to go that high level, but just simple snapshots of what's going on in the community, why these are positive things. And 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 try to lend a hand to the positives of amalgamation. Heather.
I think it's kind of important now, seeing as how the West End, the project, the Bagoon project going forward. Um, to get the news out there about that because, you know, like. There's reasons why we do things like netting the cliffs or the swallows because Alberta Environment told us we had to do that. You know, and generally the people don't know that. You know, so, um, I think that. There's important information that we can get going, rolling out now, we couldn't do it before. And we'll be able to actually roll out some of the financial applications at West End. And hopefully with any luck, we'll get some news on grants that we've applied there for that project. Um, so, um, those are wins that, uh, hopefully we can, are not even wins, just general communications to to the public. So that we're not getting nailed with these stupid questions, well. You know, what's this costing to protect us? Why are we doing this? Why do we have to do this? It's like, well, because we have to do an Alberta environment mandated event. So. Yeah, I think that, uh, yeah. So those kind of communications will be really great and to start, we did say that we'd start communicating from the West End side as soon as everything. Got rolled out again, so.
I'm flustered. Uh, motion, recommendation. Yes, okay. All in favor? Is it done? That's all right, that's right.
Forgot to give him his mic.
Um, any final comments before we move on from the one year? And we'll move over to the whole terms, uh, the committee of the whole terms.
Yes, uh, but I agree with all the questions on amalgamation. Totally support that. I think it's been a great job with communications, so, uh, get some stuff written up, let's do it.
Awesome. Thanks, Mary Crane. Okay, let's move on from three point two, team. Um, and again, if the, if there's one thing that can be said, uh, it's thank administration. I mean, that that really comes down to.
It's grants, Dad. Sorry, I didn't get to say that. I go back to me and say, dude, what's up? Parity, parity, sir.
You learn those terms. Uh, why don't we get through these, uh, terms of reference and then we'll take five minutes before we go into close. Is everyone agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Nate, Craig, Nate Money.
Nate, Cindy.
Nate.
Um, okay, so. High level thoughts, you want to take four point one? Um, okay, so high level thoughts? You want to take four point one?
Yeah, next Deputy, I'll actually um. Turn it over to Verna. She's got a much better grounds than this than myself.
Uh, so council asked to have this brought forward to the committee of the whole for discussion of the terms of reference. And I kind of got the feeling that um, very specifically, we're looking at what kinds of things are placed on this agenda. Versus a council meeting agenda? So I, I gave you the um, excerpted terms of, or, or the, sorry, the committee by law. So it's a little shorter and sweeter than normal. I, I did not make any recommendations. I just wasn't positive if that was the only thing you were looking at, or if you wanted to make changes or.
Yeah, I think we were just kind of, yeah, it's all, and then we'll slide around here.
Uh, councillor Thompson had brought up that our last meeting. That's the first meeting in March, some people having the reasonable meetings live streaming. I'll add to the motion there. We put order and so. That has to be taken, but does that need reference? But does that need to be added into the terms of reference?
Yeah, number five. Number five is a bit of an error.
This was an extra meeting set by the leadership of council on a different day in a different town.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, Karen.
I think we all know probably about committee of the whole meetings and their efficiency. Um, point, point uh, discussion and then having to take it back up to the council and. And just, to me, it just doesn't seem efficient. But I think that one of the things that I would like to see is. That yes, there's supposed to be more relaxed, easier discussion, but we tend to either get off topic or off the agenda. And they need to be more structured. Um, I do get that. And I do get that we get that opportunity to have that open discussion, but we have that open discussion at regular council meetings too. This to me is just, okay, we have that open discussion more. We do a good job of talking about items and. And doing that. So I just did not sure why, like some kind of like, then we send them up to council. And then they get discussed again, and then they get voted on. And it just seems like a lot of duplication in many cases. So um. I think that the terms of reference do need to reflect about the live streaming and the, and the posting on YouTube. Um, the, the concern I had about the agenda was prior to us making the vote about the live streaming. Because we have two very important items that came forward, um, one being the R C M P. And that should have been. Able to, anybody should have been able to see that. So that's one of the things. And the other thing was uh, the utility rate uh, uh, discussion. So those two items I felt should have been in a regular council meeting. So being able to determine, uh, our C A O being able to determine or work with our deputy C A O. When it comes to committee of the whole agenda, um, some delegations could very well go to committee of the whole. Some delegations do not belong here. Um, travel Alberta should have been a, a committee of the whole. And the R C M P at a regular council. So having a bit more control over, I don't know where you. You do that on the terms of reference, but I think it's really important. So that we are being transparent and more efficient. Um, I'd like to see these meetings go underway, but that's not going to happen. Um, I think be, be more efficient in what we're doing here. And be able to put the, like, the priority items on our regular council meetings. That the public really wants to see. However, again, now that we're in a live stream, public can view these meetings. So anyway, that's just my two cents on that.
Bigs other?
I don't, I don't know if there's any more changes in terms of reference they need to make, but it's just more. More, they need to be more efficient when it comes to these things. And, and Sammy, we can't be directing staff without emotions. We just can't. It's not our job. We're an advisory committee to council.
These committee of the whole things are new to me. We didn't have them where I come from. And so when we amalgamated, I was sure, I would just love these things. And I have spent most of this meeting amusing myself by thinking, well, we made a recommendation to council. I wonder what council's going to think. So I am fine getting rid of these things and adding a special council meeting. Where we can actually make decisions. I don't think we need special meetings to discuss pertinent topics like what we're discussing right now. So I'm with Heather, let's just get rid of this cow business. And get special meetings if required, or even we could have three council meetings. I don't care how you want. But this recommending stuff to myself, it's like talking to yourself in the shower. Like, nothing's getting around it.
Yeah, I have a very different view of you on that. To me, this was just supposed to be FaceTime with our C A O in an informal basis. So you could get the information you need on the flavor of council before you guys go through all the work. Like on the M P C, before you bring that to council, find out if it's even something interesting, people are interested. You know, our snow policy the other day, you know, find out what council it even cares about. Cause in a council meeting, I feel like we're, like we're making decisions and dealing with stuff at hand. But there's a bazillion other things that we're interested in and strategic things and things that come up that we never get to talk about. Except for if we're doing it where we're not supposed to, you know, at the coffee shop and we're through text, right? Uh, like there are certain things that just don't, there's no opportunity to talk about. Uh, and I don't like, I don't like the cow with all of staff because staff time is very expensive. I would way rather, like, this was great tonight because it's your first time and we're strategic priorities, so it's good. Um, but for me, it's, I, I don't want to consistently be meeting. You know, all of us having to meet one-on-one with you to get, you know, to say what we're interested in and what we're worried about and what. Where our minds at. So if we don't have a cow setting, how do you, and we might, we might have experience in other municipalities. How do you get to know your council and, and know the direction that you need to be going with some admin work? Without going through a ton of work, like a great example was the uh, changing the um. The discovery days to block diamond side, right? That was something that I was interested in, but it ended up being if we just could have had a strategic little discussion and found out that nobody else was interested in it. Staff wouldn't have spent time on it, right? Um, like, but it didn't need to become, it didn't need to come to council. Really, it could have just easily been done saying, oh, we only have one councillor out of seven that's interested in that item. They don't know that, right? I think so. Like it should just that, is it, yeah, to me, cows should be strategic priorities and what's on council's mind. So we're not talking about it offside in private conversations. That's, or if we've got something that's really huge, that is going to take a very long conversation, but you're right, especially maybe you bet for that. Um, so I don't know. So that's my.
Are you going to comment on that? Should I go there?
I have one big comment. We just add another point to the agenda, council job session fifteen minutes done.
A roundtable discussion, yeah, we did that in some committees.
So if I may, the manner in which our council procedure by law is written. I don't know if we have it in here, this time I don't have it pulled up, but quite often there's limitations on how often you can speak or how long you can speak. That's in a council meeting, where the committee of the whole benefits is that you are allowed to have deliberation. And speak more than what your council procedure by law has. Now, the reality is, we don't really follow a tight council procedure by law. So that's where, I don't want to speak for councillors Thompson and, and Coever. But that's where the similarities are seen within what we're doing with the committee of the whole, which shouldn't be. The committee of the whole should be deliberation, not debate. There's quite a bit difference there. In deliberation, you're discussing, you're getting more information, there's not an inquiry time, it's deliberate. So what happens in a, in a parliamentary system, the, the house, using that as a big term. Would dissolve into a committee of the whole immediately to deliberate. And then go back up as an ad hoc committee and then go back up into the House of Commons, so to speak, so then they could decide. Where we, like tonight, I think was a great illustration of the value of the committee of the whole. There is great conversation, there's deliberation, we weren't making any decisions because we want some further information. So we make that recommendation, we come back, when the recommendations come forward in the manner in which we request it. Starting with the C A O report for strategic priorities, then we can make this definitive direction at the council level. That's what the purpose is. If we follow the council procedure by law in the way it should be. Where we're limited on how often we can speak to a matter, then this committee of the whole becomes quite different. But we don't do that at the council level, so that's why there's a lot of similarities with what we're doing. I think it's a very valuable tool, so long as we, we deliberate.
Start with you Heather, and then we'll go to Veronica. Let's deliberate.
Anyway, um, I, I disagree. It's still inefficient. So we send a recommendation up to council, then they decide they have to make another recommendation to direct administration. And I've seen this committee direct administration. So it's just duplication all over the place. I'd rather see that. And, and if we look back, I believe that you took the time limit out of the council procedure by law.
Yeah, yeah, we know, but.
That's the difference.
So the differences between what happens at a council level and what happens at a committee level. Committee level, deliberate. And deliberate simply means where we're building that relationship among ourselves about a certain topic. At a council level, we don't do that. We're supposed to debate. So if you have a motion on the table and you disagree, you should persuade me to agree with you, or then I would step over with an imposing thought. We don't, we don't do that at, at the committee level, neither should. That's the value of the committee. And that's why I'll stand true to recommending that we continue the committee of the whole, because we need these points of deliberation. We need to find the commonalities and move forward with what's best for the community in a different way than what we do at council level. So I, I'm a huge fan of difference in words, and there's a huge difference between deliberate and debate.
I think we lose a huge portion of transparency with this committee. I know we are live streaming. But most people will not have time to cross-reference what happens at past and next council meetings. With what we've discussed or deliberated at a committee of the whole. That sounds like three hours of work that most people just won't put the time in. So I'm, we've all gone through J F A, which is the Joint Friendship Agreement, whatever. Which was exactly like a committee of the whole. It was two separate councils could not make decisions as a group. Who had to discuss it and deliberate and then go back to their respective councils where they could make decisions and motions. But by that point, a week had passed or more, and then someone had come up with some new brilliant idea. So whatever was agreed upon at the J F A table was now a new discussion entirely, and it just led to infight. So I'm, I just, I do not love these cow things. I'm going to try and take vacation in your mind.
Tell us how you feel, Termer Relics.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, buddy.
Okay, just a small delay at all. Um, quick one, um, Veronica, you're funny, you make me laugh. Uh, Jonathan and Cindy, I believe you are on the right track. The point of the cow is the discussion portion. It's the open-ended conversation. It's important. Uh, eight years ago, no committees. Not, one, not any meeting of council was recorded prosperity or public. You showed up and sat in the chair, or you had to go and ask a councillor, or you read. The bits that had no debate, that just showed a simple motion. And so transparency has come an extremely long way uh, since we've begun a digital. Uh, so I don't feel that we are doing it to service the residents. Um, I believe that we've upped the game time and time again, and now we're going to record committee of the whole meetings. Um, well, I think transparency is there, and I agree Veronica, that's why I find this so funny. No one has three hours to sit and listen to us banter on about nothingness, only come up with the same solution that we had at the beginning of the meeting. In some cases. So um, committee of the whole is about having a conversation. Do we have enough interest in this one topic to head in a direction and actually action some money and some resources to it? Or is it all just, you know, fairy dust in the wind? Uh, we had a conversation, good. Now we know it's garbage, let's throw it out and move on. So what we used to do, um, in my first council experience is we would have a committee of the whole. Held our meetings in the daytime. Obviously, I'm not suggesting that by any means. But it was a three-hour committee of the whole, followed by a fifteen-minute special meeting of council. And it was agenda and advertised as committee of the whole from X to X on that day. And special meeting to follow at X and X, usually about a fifteen-minute uh, break in between. So that if there was anything in that committee of the whole that was really actionable. Uh, through that debate and deliberation, then we would come out, go into that special meeting to finish off the day. Make some motion, set some direction, and you're done. Now, that does seem a bit duplicated. But to councillor Gordon's point, um, we have the policy and the procedure manual. And you are only supposed to speak once in a regular debate, right? Um, and so on and so forth. We don't do that because we want to have that open transparency and communication. We've all said, agreed, it's absolutely essential that we do not shut down council. If they have something to say, it's essential that they say it. I've always been on that side of the fence and I've always said, if you want to say something, now's your time. And I'll, I'll continue to do that till my last day at the table. Um, but it doesn't make for quick meetings, as we know. This is for those topics where we wanted to get it off our chest, have a discussion, and it's just something we want to do. Uh, and we would have items that we've deliberated that are going to fall into that window. And we've got another one we're going to talk about in a little while. And it should be another interesting conversation. Coming out of that, we might have some direction, but we don't have an opportunity to set the direction. So that's where a special council meeting that's identified and advertised, that follows directly, could be effective. But uh, for right now, I'm uh, totally in agreement with keeping the cow. And moving on. There you go. That's my thoughts, anyway.
Thanks, Barry. You in the table this time? Cindy, go ahead.
If something, then you have people that hate it so badly though. And I think that there is a solution beyond. Just on-site, wanting to keep it on-site, not whether it is roundtable, the special time, there is an extension council meeting. Uh, we have problems with our council meetings being too long and people getting down to it. There is, and when you've got an item that is really, really long, um. That's why we wanted, like, if it's a policy or by law or something, to have it in venture meeting. Um, so we like committed our council procedure by law, so that was just it. I think we should just let our administration, because you have a different view, and you've been through different systems. Um, for me, it's important for me that we're not inefficient, wasting staff time on items that we don't care about. So we need you to find a way to let us be heard on those things. Um, before a huge amount of work gets into it. I think that's our big thing. And we also need a way to get our meetings shorter. Um, like, for each Committee of the Whole, we have paid extra four versus three to council months, you know? So if it is a really long item, it's gonna take six hours, I'd rather be paid for it, you know, to be honest, because it's a huge amount of work that goes into those. It needs to be a balance, like, we are, you know, for the amount of work, we're supposed to be ten to fifteen hours a week is what I got told to be first one on council. There's no freezing way, um, that that happens. Um, we we need a, we need more balance, especially if we're the trap, you know, good, solid candidates to want to do our job, you know, for any of us that don't run again. Um, it, we have to have that life, work-life balance, but it's it's only good to be a councillor if you feel like you actually have a chance to say what you want to say and to make changes, do things like, it took us four years to get recycling, that curbside recycling, when every council. When every councillor agreed on it, you couldn't get something simple like that done, because we could never get it on the agenda, like, we had a mayor that wouldn't let us put stuff on agendas, so that didn't help. But, you know, like, I think that there's a solution if we think outside the box and not be the yes Committee of the Whole and no Committee of the Whole. Um, I think, I think there's a middle ground that is probably better if we let administration look for it.
I would like a recommendation, uh, I'd like to make one, that we recommend to council to direct in uh administration to look into this at our next meeting. At the next council. Yes, because we can't direct administration, maybe only make it to ourselves to. I am totally, can I get that? I totally agree with you on that, that that is dumb.
It is so, it's so dumb.
Is it okay if I turn the tables around and ask council a question, because I'm lacking some institutional knowledge? Uh, and I know it exists at this table. There used to be in Turner Valley a governance and priorities committee. What was its purpose and was it effective? Because I can tell you from an admin perspective, there is one purpose for which we do actually like a Committee of the Whole. And I think a different type of committee might still resolve that, and that is bringing the draft documents for discussion that we don't want to take up an entire council meeting if we're late. I don't know if I'm going anywhere where council wants to go with, for example, a snowing policy or something that can be very contentious. And we don't know if we've gone this way, when council wants us to go this way, so. Is, what what was that committee for? Was it useful? Did it?
I can't speak to that one, it's been long, since I was one that opened it, pushed for it. Uh, we had governance priorities and finance committee, because I was tired of those taking huge portions of the agenda, so we split it up. I think, but then we had new administration and nobody on council liked it, and then this finance committee, some people weren't on that committee and other people were, and then it got to be a huge fight, and then everyone just got rid of it all, and someone said, we'll do Coway, that was in the Sean. Um, so if you, if it's not something that you have all of council supporting and all of administration supporting, it's going to be a problem. So we need a solution that works for everybody and not just push forward by me, right? That's why I'm trying to be sort of, considerate on. It's late, so you don't worry on this, um, we need something that actually works for everybody. And it it could just be going into Committee of the Whole at a roundtable at the end of council meeting, and then calling a special meeting when we have to do a bylaw that we know is going to take a long time. Right? You're saying so, but how would? Well, no, just go into Cow like you would do at the end or into a roundtable. But then I don't want them turned into event sessions either.
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna follow through the C A O. Um, what did Blackdon do for their bylaw reviews and everything? They have sort of the special meetings or maybe meetings, because I know that you would stick down with not all of them, but some of them, and never. I'm not a committee, okay for that.
Um, okay, if I could, so we, if if we needed to review a bylaw in that kind of depth, then it happened at a council meeting. Didn't have any committee at all, okay, to do any of these things. No, which is why I'm asking for the history, because it's it's an anomaly for me as well. So.
I also, for me, as a councillor, I hate, I know how much of the time sent emails are and trying to get information. Um, especially if it's something that nobody else on council cares about, and it's just me. Uh, so I think there's a whole bigger conversation of efficiency and how council and administration work together uh that needs to happen. Um, if we've got the, you know, admin inquiry agenda, different tools, but a lot of them we're not using properly um or efficiently, uh, because staff time is stupidly expensive. Um, and our time, we're not getting paid enough to do a lot of stuff that we end up taking on, right? Um, and and I just want to say, I loved your email on the library, you helping us on some things, you know, that we're struggling with. Um, and and I'm hoping that we're opening up a new era of working together, uh, to be better at what we do.
Yeah, thanks, I'd be off first if you read them thoughts around it, so I kind of hear, you know, the balance between efficiency and, you know, via the M G A and that, you know, it's quick decision-making, it's body, and I understand to the Committee of the Whole, the idea is to allow for that deliberation, so you don't get a form of council in the coffee shop, right? Um, the other local governments worked and experienced, uh, lots would go to a special uh council meeting, and then you would just receive a file for information. So say it's, um, contentious bylaws, it's paying for a temperature check, it would be, uh, you know, and again, it could be four or five a year, we have a special council meeting. Uh, it comes forward, you looked at it, you don't actually, you could put a motion forward on it, but other than that, it would just be, okay, we're receiving this file for info. Um, what happened in my previous city, yeah, we had a finance audit committee and a governance and priorities committee, and what it ended up morphing into was essentially uh an additional council meeting. Everyone showed up, and then it got to the point where you had four council meetings. If you do away with a Committee of the Whole where it becomes problematic, where you have all these questions, and it is, you basically have to create a tracker. It's public transparency, so when these kind of requests for info come in, you add it to a tracker, and then it absorbs a lot of time, too. Um, where I would suggest, if if uh the committee or council decides to to carry on with Committee of the Whole is is to keep it focused on the agenda, right? So I'm looking now, you know, I think we got five, I have to confirm with Veronica, five resolutions, but if it's one of the other kind of info requests seep out off to the side, you know, I can look at the A, B, and C for me as well. That's where we're kind of going around council, and that's that's where that lowercase c is gonna jump on the As, right? So if I get three or four kind of detailed requests, for me, it's, do I spend two hours on this tomorrow, or do I look at the big files? I probably won't do both. Uh, so that's where you know, if I could offer some initial guidance, would be to keep it focused on the issues at hand, if that's something that council wants to uh direct administration to look at a few different models, that we certainly could, or different options. Uh, again, I don't think that would be a quick thing, but I think to actually research that properly would take some time. Uh, because again, what I'm kind of seeing in my head and hearing, you know, the two previous towns, is that it sort of goes in a circle where new councillors come on board and they say, well, you know, I'm not getting enough information at this council meeting. There's a lot of stuff I don't understand, right? So you, well, let's have a committee to to discuss it, and then it goes back to, okay, well, the committee's not efficient. Can we look at special council meetings, or maybe, you know, finance committee, or a governance priorities committee, which there's only, I think, more members of council on, the other three will probably start to be interested in, so. Uh, it's can't really offer, what what way is the best? I understand both viewpoints completely. Um, if if the committee recommended to council to direct administration to look at it, we would ultimately look at uh probably a pro-con chart on a few different options, and I don't think we arrive at a model that satisfies everyone.
Final comments? Just leave this one here, or was your motion for real? Anything else? Because we're gonna go into those.
Oh, I'm sure, I want to.
Yeah.
Think about it.
You can always add it to the agenda.
I'm just saving page. And that's a, it's fine. Yeah, no, I, I have that thought. Oh, fine, every other month, now we've had it. I, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we won't even have it more regularly, because we bring an item on board, and because we had a lot of other things to to go over. Yeah.
But it totally means we've got a special meeting. Yeah, there's no reason to do it as a Committee of the Whole, versus doing it as a special meeting. And you own up to the duplication age, and where you can make like motions.
Yeah.
But, and you get paid through special. Yes.
Well, we have Blackdon, we have special meetings.
Patients that have been bothered.
Yes.
I mean, it's fine for discussing policy or governance concepts, but some of these are actually light, it's just, oh. I don't know, I want to think about it.
Okay. Do you have a final comment?
If I were initial guidance, I I would probably say retool it into uh standing special meetings, where you could capture big items, budget, strategy. Um, and look at some sort of receipt for info, because I understand the importance of deliberation or formalized setting, I'm not of expertise in how the M G A plays that out, but certainly uh in bailout, we kind of had a portion of council meetings dedicated to um to that, we didn't call it motions, but there's other terminology we use to, ultimately, it was a receipt for info, special budget meeting, it's a special tax meeting. Because at the end of the day, I think we have five
Correct.
Committee of the Whole meetings a year, but on top of those five Committee of the Whole meetings, uh, we know there's likely gonna be a special budget meeting as well, so really, you're looking at almost every second month, understanding, since I'm new, I understand maybe a couple of extras, but
Hmm.
however you cut it, possibly five or six.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so I've been doing some research here among many municipalities that do Committee of the Whole, and something I just had a light bulb moment, maybe it's because it's me, I'm tired. How many times have we made a motion in the last year and a half, made a decision that we reneged on and wish we hadn't made? Let's be honest. There's a couple even this, earlier this year, where we made the decision and we came back and said, well, we gotta do something different. So the value of a Committee of the Whole is you don't make those decisions. You have a sober second thought to take it away, and then when a decision has to be made, we're gonna stick to that decision. We've made decisions this year already that we wish we had made differently. And so Committee of the Whole, and this one I'm reading here, Committee of the Whole is a place to encourage discussion of topics, but it's not where decisions are made. And I think that's super valuable.
Be it higher decisions or time they have to be made in a high motion. But deliberating helped. It's sinking into a hole in the floor, it's sinking home with a lot, but I'm not sure. Especially. I like, I like the idea of special, standing special meetings. I would like them on Wednesday, so it's, because I hate taking that to weeknights, because if you have a weekly commitment, like, you have two nights, you can't do it on. Um, I do like that, and I think it should just be a standing item on these standing special meetings to go into Committee of the Whole. Uh, and that's where council board gets.
Yeah, then you can come out and make a.
But that, we generally shouldn't, though, because those should just be items that we are just deliberating and need to think about longer.
So what's the point then of Committee of the Whole?
So you're not talking in coffee shops. I agree that I'm in coffee shops. I don't talk to coffee shops, we talk.
At one time, Heather, was there not a uh council meeting that could lead into a Committee of the Whole? That was what. So when we, when we debated this whole Committee of the Whole thing, was when we had Alberta, the advisers here who were talking about it, because we had Committee of the Whole meetings way back then. But that's been taken right out of the M G A now. The whole Committee of the Whole thing gone. And the reason behind it was because they are inefficient and dropping staff from these, and also stuff gets thrown over the fence by the Committee of the Whole meeting. And the point that Debbie made was what can you not do on a regular council meeting than you do at a committee? Liberated self-committee. You debate at a council meeting, you should have the opportunity. So you're doing exactly what we should be at a regular council meeting. And so they kind of took Committee of the Whole and enjoyed it, but the M G A, because she's cast, what's that you do at a regular council meeting to be doing?
If you could have the opportunity to make things, to talk about things without making it an official agenda item, that then, like the deer thing, you know, that's to Jonathan, if you could have just talked about that in Committee of the Sumo Chamber, and just brought everyone's thoughts on it, and then just left it at that, versus making it this official part of the agenda, a regular agenda, uh, that then gets picked up at the press and then goes big. Are you gonna? Oh, I don't, I didn't like it. But I thought it made it more.
I, I just don't think that that's inefficient, nor is it transparent.
Well, it's not video.
Oh, it's like, not, not video, it wasn't on video, it is now, but still, we still have to make recommendations up to staff. Or to council to then direct staff to do something. And I just, it's just, it's just the same thing, like, why aren't we just having a special meeting? To do that. And I do get that you, you want to have more of deliberations, but I don't think that we do a bad job of that in regular council meetings. I also think that these need to be more structured, because that's, stuff does get possible in events, it's not right.
So creating a structure and going around in a circle.
I'm not talking about it, I just don't like them.
Everyone's had the opportunity to say the same thing three times here. Um, let's move on. I think the essence of the conversation, I, yeah, I don't know what the solution is, I think that this is a starting point for us. Um, I don't think we need to make any recommendations, do we, at this time? I think you guys are, yeah, okay, okay. Um, can we just leave it be?
Good, Debbie, one, uh, one thing we could do from a staff perspective is uh bring back some considerations and options to Committee of the Whole, like I'm retreating these to special council meetings, uh, where something tonight, say, the M P C discussion, uh, would come forward in a report.
Hmm.
Debate it, the motion may be to receive for info, so that's how we would do the temperature gauge, so it still follows council protocols, but it still allows for deliberation. If council wanted to not only receive it for info and make a motion right there, it could, so what happened in a previous city was, uh, the administration would bring something like a, say, a three-service review, receive for info, and, uh, you know, debate deliberation would occur, and should council want to make a motion, they could step off there or not, so it kind of uh, sad, it's similar, similar in size, and then, of course, you'd already have standing, uh, And then, of course, you already have standing uh, special council meetings instead of those committee of the whole. Because again, I think we're gonna need them for budget anyways, so. If the committee leaves it there, I think um, staff would bring this to a future committee meeting to look at it, because right now I appreciate it's all around in circles and I think we need a little more research.
Sure. Okay. Thanks. Okay, uh, let's uh, take five minutes and then we're going to close, if you guys want, or do you? Are you good? Everyone's okay to take five minutes? Yeah, okay. Okay, let's take five minutes, uh, at eight thirty-one. Um, we'll call the meeting back to order at eight forty. And uh, is he the only one on?
He is.
Yeah.
I'm going to just take a quick second and lock the room down.
And then I'll take your motion, is.
Okay. Oh, it is locked, so go ahead.
It's, it's going to close. Council, all those in favor?